Good evening, welcome to the first Youth City Council meeting of 2024 with our new Youth City Council.
If you could please call roll.
Mosley?
Present.
Yes.
Present.
Wellington?
Present.
Campbell?
Present.
Tovar Cantreres?
Present.
Let us please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Professor Michael Judd will come up.
Alright, first of all, I want to say congratulations to the new city, Youth City Council, and I want to give a nod at the past because I know that, you know, to be the first is very hard. And so they've done a wonderful job. So just enjoy yourself and be yourself. Let us pray. The gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for gathering us this evening, Father God. We ask and pray that you be upon the Youth City Council, the new ones this evening, Father God. Just give them the knowledge, their Lord God, and the will, their Lord God, in order to do what their agenda is, oh Father God, and just to be able to speak on behalf of the youth, Father God. And we just thank you and praising you for what you're going to do. And Lord God, we pray that you just be upon the city of Hutchinson. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
In Jesus Christ's name we pray, amen.
Right? Like what was just said, I would like to thank everyone for coming. Welcome to our first Youth City Council meeting of the new year. I'd like to thank everyone here next to me on the Youth City Council and to our board and to our audience. Thank you for always supporting us and welcome to the first meeting. Next item, please.
Item four, petitions and communications. For all communications from the audience, please limit your remarks to five minutes and to items not on the agenda.
So this is the part of the meeting where audience members will have a chance to communicate with the Youth City Council.
Hello. Number one, I'm very excited to be here. My name is Mary Grace Clemens. I'm the interim city manager and I know this is a five-minute presentation, but if you can give me a little latitude, I would certainly appreciate it. What I'd like to do, if I could here tonight, is to start off by giving you a little bit of a talk about city hall and city government and what it's like to be involved and be a part of this. And so I want to start out by talking with you about city hall and city government and what it's like to be involved. What does city government do? We'll talk a little bit about that. We'll talk about how does it do that and then how can you be involved? And what I'm hoping from this is to give you a little bit of an exposure about our government as well as what I'd like to see from you at your direction going forward for every meeting, having a department head from the city come in and talk to you about their specific government so you can be exposed to what different facets and different parts of the government and how it runs, okay? So to start out with, what does the city government do? We have to take money in to give you an idea of how the city government makes money, the city of Hutchinson, for every dollar that you pay in property taxes. This is how your dollar is broken up. Thirty-two cents goes to the USD 308 school district of every dollar. Twenty-five cents, so a one-quarter of every dollar of property tax comes to the city of Hutch. Twenty-three cents goes to county. Thirteen cents goes to the Hutch Community College. Four cents to the library, two cents to Hutch Rec, and one cent to the state and city governments. So twenty-five cents of every dollar is what we get at the city. That's part of the funding we get. We also get money generated from sales tax. So when you go and buy, purchase things in the community, you pay sales tax. And of that, and it's all broken down here, what we as the city get in sales tax is 1.4%. So we get money from the, the county share sends money from sales tax. We get, we put money in the general fund. We have, there is a special that was passed by the voters for the sports arena, that's 0.35 cents of a percent. And then you'll see those other two things, says infrastructure for roads and property tax reduction. That's another special that was voted in by our citizens. And you'll see it also goes to Stratica and the Cosmosphere. And we share in that, we get a quarter of a penny. And that quarter of a penny is split between the Cosmosphere, Stratica, it goes to our roads into our property tax reduction. So we get, as you can tell, we get from our dollar, we get 25% of the dollar goes from the property tax and the sales tax is 1.4%. What do we do with every dollar that we get? So what we do with the money is 49 cents of each dollar is spent on our fire and police departments. We spend 11 cents of each dollar on the parks and facilities. The building here is that you're in, different Public Works buildings, Memorial Hall, those are our buildings, plus all the wonderful parks that we have throughout our city. We have the Public Works and Engineering, our streets and water sewer. Four cents goes to economic development as we're looking at how we can improve and if we want to bring in business. Eight cents, eight cents of every dollar is for IT, HR, the city management, for finance department, for our attorney. Seventeen cents is in capital improvements and bonds. We spend money on if we have to do infrastructure, if we want to forecast how we're going to spend our money to invest in our city. And then some of the smaller ones are planning and development and inspections and codes. So every dollar, this is about how we spread it out. This is all based on last year's money. For that, 25 cents of every dollar, you're getting your fire, your police, your 911. You're getting streets, whether they're cleaned, you're getting water and sewer to your homes. You get our zoo, you get the airport, you get protection on our infrastructure. We get the bikes, the bridges, golf course, disc golf course, arts and culture. You can see the list of things for every quarter of a dollar that we collect. So everything that you see within the city, we're responsible for, and this is how we get the funding. So you see how we get the funding and what we do with the funding, we put it back into the community in this manner. Forestry, cutting down dead trees, the forestry around the airport to make sure the airport is safe. Downtown revitalization, Memorial Hall, the parks, Cary Park, Herman Bunty Park, you can name them all. Also, it's for our streets, how we maintain them, how we fix them, all the bridges that have to be repaired. All the banners that go up, down, and downtown, the decorations, all of our traffic lights. All of that goes into what we spend our dollars on. How do we do all of that? How does it work? How does city government work? Well, what happens first, people have to vote. And they vote in five council members, right where you're sitting. And how our city of Hutchinson works, which is a little bit different than some other cities can be, is they vote, the five members of our council vote every year to decide who will be the mayor. So the five council members, one of them is voted in as the mayor. Then the council and the mayor hire a city manager. Right now, that's me. Then I am responsible for all the different department heads that we have that run the city. Director of Public Works, the police chief, the fire chief. We have the Parks and Facilities, Engineering, Community Development, that deals with the different zoning. Finance, Information, IT, Human Resources, City Attorney, and the airport. So we have a lot of different directors that we work with that report up to the city manager. Every department has to work in conjunction with each other department. You'll see here today, we've got people from the Parks Department are here working, the Facilities, Parks and Facilities. They're working on the building here. We have IT back here. But more than that, everything touches another component of the city. If we're talking about that we're going to fix the roads and the curbs, well, is there other things that we have to do in conjunction from one department to another? What do you do now? I mean, this is one of the first steps, and I'm so proud of you for stepping into this role to be engaged and involved because you're the future, you're the future not only for our city, but for our state and for our country. So I think being engaged is the first thing you need to do. You have to vote. So as soon as you're legal to, we want you to register and we want you to vote. Every primary, you need to vote. Your voice matters. Each and every voice matters, so please use it as you choose. Be informed and engaged. The fact that you're here tells me you're engaged. And I'm, again, I cannot, I cannot tell you how vital it is and how proud I am that you're doing this because other people couldn't, but you stepped up and you're doing it, so I'm proud of you for that. You can also, people can join committees. There's lots of committees that are volunteers, they're not paid positions, but we have an airport advisory committee, we have a Board of Zoning Appeals, Buildings and Trade Board, Housing Commission, Human Relations Commission, Land Bank, Landmarks Commission. All of these are components within the city, so if you, if we want to put up a shed in a house or if you want to change something, you go before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission makes a recommendation, it comes to City Council. So this is the frontline and residents in the community sit on these committees. They volunteer to do that. You can run for office. Looks like you already did that. That's why you're here. So running for office, this is how you stay engaged. Consider this as a career. Think about this for a minute. Giving back to the community is not only something that you can do that gives you pride, but it's a great career. And there's many different careers in the city that you can take advantage of. Public Works, working on our streets, heavy equipment, machine operation, traffic lights, firemen, working on our emergency vehicles, police officers, animal control, or zoo. There's our bison. Parks Department, dealing with flowers and plants. There's so many things that they do, mowing grass. This is our sewer, where they have to look at the lines and the sewer lines and they do that with different remotes and cameras that they can put in to check for blockages and things. IT, right back there, IT runs every different facet, every different component within the city. You know, our water department, testing the water to make sure our water treatment plant is done. Drones, you know how many drones we have in the city, whether it's the IT department, it's Parks Department, this Police Department, Human Relations Officer. Our Public Works, our codes, Buildings and Codes, our building, our water utility workers, Information Technology, our Public Communications. So all of this, every day, our residents and our employees show up to keep the city running. And every facet that you walk out here, a city worker is touching that. And I got a little video, this is from our 150th year, and if you can, just give me a second, we'll set this up. Oh, gotta have some voiceover.
...for our community and to serve the public good by establishing a government that would cultivate those things through local rule and public service. Today, city employees and volunteers continue that work. From Public Works to Public Safety, from Parks and Facilities to Utility Billing, we work to make our city safer, more connected, more just, healthier, more beautiful, happier. It's not glamorous, it's not always fun, it's hard work, but it's meaningful work. We strive to support the quality of life, belonging, safety, and opportunity of all our residents through careful stewardship, integrity, and collaboration. As our community celebrates this milestone, we continue to work toward a shared vision and to ensure that the city of Hutchinson has even more to celebrate in the future.
So what I want to do is just give you a little bit of an overview of how a city runs. This is how we get our funding and our money. This is how we use our money today. And then the City Council are the ones that decide how we use our money in the future. So we're looking at forward and we look at what's called our community improvement projects. How do we spend money going forward? Like where do we future want to put money in? Is it, do we want to build a new building, whatever that would be? We have to plan for that going forward. So I want to give you a little overview of this, and I hope that gives you a little bit of an idea of things you might want to learn more about. And that's what I'm hoping we could do throughout this year that you're here, okay? Do you have any questions for me off the bat? Thank you for allowing me the time to talk to you all. So thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for stepping into this role, and I wish you a lot of success this year, okay?
Thank you. Again, your support, the city's support, our board's support is just amazing. And I feel like the only reason we get to do these things is because you guys are always supporting us, so thank you for that.
You are welcome.
Any more from the audience? Hearing none, please move to the next item.
Item 5A, welcome from the Youth City Council Board.
So I'm going to sound like a broken record over here, but again, hi, my name is Ruby Tovar Cantreres. I am the president of the Youth City Council.
Hi, my name is Kalen Wellington. I am treasurer. And again, like Ruby was saying, having the city's support is amazing.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Campbell, Secretary for Youth City Council, and I would like to thank you all for coming.
My name is Madeline Mosley. I'm the vice president, and I'm happy for everyone that came today.
My name is Malia Marshall Guest. I am the Activities Director, and I am so thankful for the opportunity that we have been granted today.
If you could move to the next item, please.
Item 5B, acknowledgement of last session's Youth City Council's accomplishments. What do you want to focus on that they started?
So, since I was on the Youth City Council last year, I want to focus on the youth fair that we started planning around this time. For our first time, it was not bad by any means. Were there things that we could approve on? Definitely. But I feel like with this year's Youth City Council, it's just going to keep getting better and better every year. And I really want to focus on the youth fair because we actually got people to come out to the youth fair. We had businesses show up, we had clubs show up, and I know this because I actually joined one of the clubs. And it's just been a great time. Planning it was a great time, being there was a great time. And I hope we get to do that again this year.
Alright, can we go ahead and move to the next item, please?
Item 5C, including sixth graders has been brought up again. Should sixth graders be included in next year's Youth Council? How should we go about making a decision?
I personally thought that Kenzie was a sixth grader, so I would like to know is, what grade? What's our lowest grade at the current moment?
It is currently seventh grade.
So, seventh through, I think that seventh is a good starting point. And if we do consider a sixth grade position, I believe that it would be better for them to be more like viewing, like a viewing audience, I suppose, or having some tinier role. And then maybe guaranteeing them a spot next year so that they can get into it more, just so that there's someone who does have experience or they are able to at least experience it first before jumping into speaking because speaking even as a seventh grader is tough as it is.
I am currently, well, with the status quo that we have right now, I believe if we were to include sixth graders into the Youth City Council, I feel like first they should be middle schoolers. And I feel like what we have now at the seventh and eighth graders who are also included, I feel like that is working very well. Obviously, Mackenzie and Kalen and Maddie are doing very good jobs. And if there were, if there were some sixth graders who really wanted to make it onto the Youth City Council, maybe take that year to inform themselves and maybe practice public speaking because as a junior right now, I can tell you, public speaking is not always my strong suit. But maybe take that year, get ready, apply as a seventh grader.
I agree with Malia and Ruby that we should have the sixth graders come to a few meetings before they join.
And I would like to further reiterate my point. We are doing very well as a Youth City Council and from the Youth City Council that we started last year. I just feel like seventh and eighth grade is like, like you're young enough to know what your, like what your peers want, but you're also old enough to fully understand what is going on in the Youth City Council. And I'm not saying that sixth graders won't be able to understand, I'm just saying that currently, like I said, maybe take that year from sixth grade to seventh grade, inform yourselves, make sure this type of community service is what you really want to do, and then better yourself. So then you can apply as a Youth City Council member.
I second that.
Now, I do have one little fun fact. There are conversations in USD 308 right now where a potential new middle school, sixth through eight, might be upcoming in the next, say, five, 10 years. Nothing is certain, but those conversations are definitely in place. So in the event that that does happen, sixth grade would be considered middle school. So would that change anybody's mind on the sixth grade include, like including?
I feel my stance would stay the same.
Okay.
As would mine personally. I believe that they need a moment to adjust to the surroundings that they're in and a time to grow, so.
And again, our guidelines for the Youth City Council are not set in stone. So if we get enough sixth graders who say that they want to be a part of the Youth City Council, or not necessarily the Youth City Council, but just get involved in the community, I feel like we'll be able to negotiate that with our board as well. But until then, I'd say keep the status quo.
No more discussion? Okay, if you could, please move on to the next item.
Item 5D, the idea of an activity between all 308 schools has been discussed and suggested. Where's Waldo or something similar?
Okay, so I'm pretty sure I'm the one who brought up this point, and I remember this because I also did this with my sister. So what we did then, a little stroll down memory lane, what we ended up doing was stores in downtown Hutchinson were hosting a Where's Waldo challenge, I would like to say. And then you would go around these stores, you would also explore downtown. You got to explore new stores that you haven't gone into yet, and you would try to find Where's Waldo. And honestly, I feel like not necessarily we have to do that, but just encourage people to come out to downtown because it is truly a lovely place in Hutchinson. Do any of my council, do you guys have any ideas for some?
Um, did you want to speak?
You can speak.
Personally, I believe something like a, not quite a block party because it's all USD 308, so it's a big block. But, but just a large community, maybe yearly event where we come together and have, you know, the free, free food and like the clubs, the Reno clubs, like Rise Up Reno and the NAACP where they come out and they get to connect with our community and our kids get to hang out. Personally, I believe that block parties are one of the best ways for kids to socialize. I loved block parties when I was growing up and I still love block parties. So block parties are amazing, and I think that that is something we should look into.
Um, I personally like the Where's Waldo idea. I've actually never heard of it before, joining. But it's something definitely I'm going to have to brainstorm and maybe I can go around my school asking kids, hey, what kind of opportunities would you like to do? And like, would you like to do Where's Waldo, excuse me, or something else like that?
I agree with both Kalen and Malia. Necessarily, like I said, it doesn't have to be like a Where's Waldo challenge, although I do like the idea. I would, I wouldn't support it if I didn't. But I genuinely just want a sense of togetherness to happen between schools because we're not, okay. Maybe in sports, we might be like a little standoffish, yes, but we are all one community in Hutchinson. And Hutchinson is such a beautiful place. Its culture is amazing, and I really feel like if we get together, it's going to be even more beautiful.
Any more comments? Alright, hearing none, please move on to the next item.
Item 5E, the youth fair will be in May. A date needs to be determined and a list of participants needs to be gathered. Other planning steps need to begin.
Is that me? Oh my gosh, yay! Um, so seeing as how this is, the first time I've actually heard of it, I was not able to go to the last meeting that we had because it was rearranged to the time that did not fit my schedule. I was not aware of this, so I do not currently have a date. I would like to, if I can, hold on and move that to the next meeting so I can further look into it and see what dates work best for all of the schools regarding Reno so that we know what is an appropriate time to hold that. And yeah.
I definitely feel like we should have some more.
I definitely feel like we should have some more time to further discuss this, and not necessarily in a council session, but rather a study session, we're, we're like gonna be like informally talking about it, starting making plans for it. Because what I, that was like my favorite part that we had last year as the U City Council, because we got to have kids learn, like, what they could do, especially in the summer, like, all we hear kids say, there's nothing to do hu- to do in Hutch, and trust me, there is. We just, you just need to get informed about it, and that's what I really loved about it. So I propose having a study session to further work the kinks out about the youth fair. I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion to turn that into a study session.
I, I, what do I say?
I move.
I move the motion.
I second that. Great. If you could call roll, please. Campbell?
Here, or present.
Do you agree, or, yeah?
Yeah, I agree, sorry. My mind's...
Okay. Wellington?
Yes.
Guest?
Oh, present. Yes.
Mosley?
Yes.
Tovar Contreras?
Yes.
Motion passed. If we could just go ahead and move to the next item, if there are no further comments or questions or any more discussion?
Do we all know what the youth fair was last year? So essentially, we got like a bunch of organizations, and we even got Chick-fil-A, who offers part jobs to teens. And we got them all to come out, and then we were at the, we were on campus, on Hutch High's campus. I'm not for sure what the building was called, but we got out there. We were, we had a table there as a U City Council, and we were giving out information to kids, because like I said, they always say there's nothing to do, but there is information, and I overall had a great time. This time around, I'm hoping we'll be more prepared, because I remember last year being very rushed, and, and I feel like our, one of our weaknesses last year was that we didn't advertise enough, so I'm really hoping to do that more this year, so.
Any questions? Fantastic. If we go, if we can go ahead and move to the next item.
Item six, closing remarks by youth city council members.
I'm not quite sure how this closing remarks thing works, because I'm still new to this, but I would like to, is this a moment where I could throw a, like, an activity that I suggest? Yes, okay. Personally, we have been talking a lot about a rec center, and I believe that going forward, that is something that our committee should strongly consider, because a rec center or a youth center that is where kids can go after school and stuff, not necessarily a boys and girls club, but just like where they can go and actually have fun and just, you know, have food and stuff, would be very good for our younger members in our community.
I just want to thank everyone for coming out, and also, May ninth, at 7:00 PM, I know it's so far away, but just have it out there. I will be participating in a district-wide band concert. It's at the SAC, Salt Hawk Activity Center. It is on a Thursday, if you guys want to know that. But I just wanted to say thank you guys for coming out tonight.
I want to say thank you for everybody being here. Yeah.
I don't really have anything for closing remarks, kinda. Thank you guys for coming out here. Thank you all for coming out here tonight, just to see.
I actually have a activity that's gonna be happening this Saturday. The NAACP Youth and College Division will be hosting a sort of book club reading, if you will. They are reading Nick Stone's Chaos Theory. It'll, it's every fourth Saturday. So every fourth Saturday, they have a new book, and they're gonna discuss it, and it's gonna take place every fourth Saturday of the month at 11:00 PM. I'd also like to thank everyone for showing up. A special thanks... Oh, 11:00 AM! 11:00 PM is a little, oh, sorry, forgive me, 11:00 AM. And I also like to thank everyone in the audience. Mary Grace Clemens, thank you for always supporting us, always being by our sides. And I'd like to thank our board, our board members who are here tonight. Special shout out to you guys, and thank you all for being here. Any further comments, any other remarks?
I would also like to extend the thank you. I did not know this was the time for that, so thank you guys for coming out here.
Alright, hearing no more comments. If anyone would make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn. I make, I move to adjourn.
I second that.
Alright, if you could please call roll. Campbell?
Yes.
Wellington?
Yes.
Guest?
Yes.
Mosley?
Yes.
Tovar Contreras?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned.
Can't kill my words.
Thank you.